And it's so rainy.
I know, you'd think it would clear the air, right?
We're live, Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the, I now call to order, the April 21st, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary, please take the roll call.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board. Toni Mayer-Nick, Clerk -- I'm sorry, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. My apologies. Toni Mayer-Nick, Clerk to the Board. Commissioner Schrader is out of the office today. Commissioner Shul is attending the Association of ONC Counties Board meeting today. Roll call, Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. With Chair's prior permission, we are flipping the agenda order to start with the presentation, so that will be first today. We have a presentation from an election update from County Clerk Sheri Hall and Elections Manager Becky Dahl. So this is just a general update on the upcoming elections. So Clerk Hall and Becky, would you please come forward?
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Fisher. It's very nice to see you this morning. It's nice to be in person. And I am doing an election update, which is way earlier than I ever have done it before because I usually give you the numbers of ballots that have been returned so far. But we haven't even mailed your ballot to you. We will do that next Wednesday, April 27th. And so I'm just going to kind of give you the history of what usually goes with every election. We started building this election during the timeframe of September 8th and March 8th, which is the filing deadline for candidates. And the work is done by both permanent staff and up to seven temporary staff that have been coming in our office almost daily. And we finished most of the work and started on mailing out the ballots. April 1st, we mailed out 1,359 military overseas ballots. April 18th, we mailed out 1,237 absentee ballots, which are really not absentee, but we call them that sometimes, and you voters call them that. Those are going to snowbirds, college students, and out-of-state voters. And April 27th, which is next Wednesday, we will be mailing out the in-state ballots for everyone in the room. And of those, there will be 304,674, bringing the total upwards of 307-plus thousand. And I gave each of you a paper that shows the number of voters in each political party. And the first column was run on Monday, the 18th. The second column was run today. And if you look at the numbers, both the totals and each party, you'll see changes in the numbers because we get registration forms every day. We also sent out the voter notification card, which you should all have gotten. Many of them came back as undeliverable, which means we inactivate that voter and we do not mail a ballot packet. But if they've moved to a different address within Oregon, they can update and get a new ballot up through 8:00 election night. For this current election, we have 447 ballot styles, which means, Chair Smith, you live in Malala, I think, which is different than where Commissioner Fisher lives, like us, we go. So of course, you're not going to get the same things on your ballot. You'll get many of the same things, governor candidates, but for districts, and you'll get all the county candidates. But there's different districts in all of your neighborhoods, so you get the one that is targeted to your neighborhood. That's why there's so many ballot styles. Okay? Eligible voters have until April 26th, which is next Tuesday, to register to vote first up or to change their party affiliation. Because Oregon is a closed primary and you either get Democrat or Republican candidates and all of the nonpartisan. But if you're not a Democrat or Republican, you will get no candidates that are partisan. Okay? The address library was sent to the mailhouse on the 14th, which means all of our eligible voters with good information was sent to the mailhouse so they can prepare the ballots for mailing. They anchor the addresses on the envelopes and the ballots get inserted. And then they will be mailed out on April 27th. So if you change your party affiliation between April 14th and April 26th, you're going to get a second ballot. And you need to vote the new ballot. That's the new ballot that they should vote and return. If they mistakenly vote and return the first one they got that they switched party from, that's the one we will count. And if a second ballot comes in, it will not be accepted because our system will know that. And we're receiving large numbers of registrations at this time, both online registrations and the hard copy. Many voters are changing their party affiliation, their name, if they've changed their name, and their addresses. And voter updates within Oregon, if you're moving from one address in Oregon to another, will be accepted up through 8:00 election night. The main mailing will be April 27th, again, as I said. And from April 27th to May 12th, because of voter changes, we will be doing supplemental mailings practically, well, probably every day up until May 12th. Election Day is May 17th. But we will do that up through May 12th. After that date, the voter will need to make the change in the office and get their ballot because it's too late to mail for them to get it in order to vote on time. And you know that there's a change this year with accepting postmarks. So Election Day is May 17th and we'll accept Election Day postmarks up through May 24th. So if you're waiting till Election Day to vote and you want to drop it at the post office, don't do that. Take it inside and get a hand cancel. Because if you drop it in a box, it may not be postmarked till the next day if they've already unloaded the box before you dropped your ballot. And you know about challenged ballots. It's ones where you either forget to sign it or your signature doesn't match our voter file signature for you. And so there's 14 days to cure that signature. And the last date for that will be June 7th. With the postmark accepting, it's actually giving an additional week to cure the challenged ballot. And we're also doing another change. The Secretary of State has given permission for all of us in Oregon to start opening ballots a week earlier than we have done before. So rather than one week before Election Day, we're going to start opening and scanning two weeks before Election Day, which is May 3rd. And that's the day at 9:00 that we will do our public test, the certification test to make sure our tally machines are working correctly. And then that's at 9:00. At 10:00, we'll start opening and scanning ballots. For this election, we will have been processing ballots from April 1st through June 23rd. And the election will be certified and done on June 23rd. And probably, I will do additional updates if you want me to do anything else.
I was going to ask you, do you want to come back with your normal update?
I can do that, but ballots are mailing out next Wednesday, so the Thursday meeting, we probably wouldn't know anything. So I could wait till the next week.
You can wait and you can determine on what day you want to come back and give us an update. Just contact.
Okay, and normally, it would just be up here for five minutes and then leaving. So I don't think I need to be on the agenda, right? Or I'll let you know.
If you would let me know, we could put it on the agenda, so it's.
Right, okay.
So the public could know that this is an elections update. That's important.
Right. And just one other point. It's always really good to vote early if your mind is totally made up as to who you're voting for or what you're voting for. Because the more ballots we have by Election Night at 8:00, the bigger that return will be. But we will also be doing return updates for an additional, at least, seven days, depending on what the numbers are.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and maybe my commissioners do too. On Election Night, you have been very good about giving the initial numbers that come in at 8:30, correct?
We do it about 5:00 after 8:00.
5:00 after 8:00, okay.
Because 8:00 is the cutoff date.
8:00, excuse me, about 8:00, okay. So, and then are you going to have an additional update that day?
Okay. With accepting the postmark, I'm not sure it's really necessary. We will be, all of the ballots that we've received by what time? Will be on the first return.
All the ballots through Monday will be on that first return. We pick up multiple times during the day, but Tuesday, we don't receive mail. It's the post office schedule. Tuesdays are no-mail day. So Election Day has become pretty light for ballot returns. It'll be whatever's in the drop boxes.
But a majority, don't, a majority of the voters wait until Election Day?
Sometimes they do. The presidential, two years ago, we got 35,000 and 36,000, two days in a row, right at the beginning. First time ever for that.
But you say mail isn't delivered on Tuesdays.
It really slowed down. We had hardly anything by 8:00. Always, that's been the heaviest. So it just depends. It's the voter who chooses.
But you're starting May 3rd to open the ballots. Does that increase your costs any? Or does it all balance out in the end?
It may actually lower it. Because historically, we've had those ballots coming in and we've had to hold them.
Until seven days before.
And then we put in a lot of longer hours because we had this large stockpile of ballots to process. So if we can start processing as they come in, we're anticipating a lot less overtime.
Good, it'll be interesting to see going forward on that. How long does the mail take nowadays to mail a ballot by the time I drop it in my box? I'm prepared to say, people, it could take up to a week for the Elections Department to receive your ballot. So like Sheri says, if you have your mind made up, go ahead and mail it. If you're a last-minute voter, you might want to deliver it in person.
We've always said, do not mail your ballot past the Thursday before Election Day because you do have to allow the transport to us from the post office.
Yes.
However, we do have the postmarks counting now. So if you mail it the day before Election Day and it gets postmarked on that day, and we receive it by seven days after the election, then we can count it.
Okay.
So that's the importance of going in and getting it hand canceled if you mail it through the Postal Service on Election Day.
Okay, so you have your update at 8:05 on Election Day. Then when is your next update that ballots, numbers will be released, that votes will be released? Do you know?
Okay, well, Tuesday's Election Day. Wednesday, we've always done a ballot exchange in Multnomah County, where Clackamas, Washington, Multnomah, Marion, Columbia, the close counties to Multnomah, go in. Because you can drop your ballot anywhere in the state of Oregon and it gets to the right county. So we exchanged the ballots we got for each other on Wednesday. And sometimes we've brought four or more of the big mail trays back. So that's probably about 1,000 or two ballots that we could do another update on.
On Wednesday?
Probably Thursday.
Thursday, at what time?
It's hard to say.
We haven't set that schedule. We haven't discussed that schedule. We haven't discussed that schedule as to when the next update will come.
Okay, so we have the update on Thursday, and then we'll have another update, excuse me, on Tuesday, and then we'll have another update on Thursday.
Possibly Thursday. And we always print on our results page when the next update will be.
Oh, okay. Good. Commissioners. Paul.
Yeah. So Sheri, appreciate you handing this out. And I see that the date of the two columns is April 18th to April 21st.
Four days apart, Monday, and then today is when we ran them.
You know, the numbers are interesting, but the one at the bottom is, I just like to get a sense, is that a trend? But I see that the total registered voters went from 308,177 to 307,359. So a reduction of about 800.
It's about 800, right.
What do you attribute that to?
The voter notifications that were mailed out because redistricting was done, so every voter was mailed one of those. And many came back as returned as undeliverable, which means they're not at that address. And so we inactivate them on our list. These are the active voters. But everyone should know it's election season. If they don't get a ballot, they should call their county clerk to see why. Not everybody does. But they can, if they were inactivated because it was returned as undeliverable and they've moved to another address within Oregon, they can activate with a new registration up through 8:00 election night.
Okay. My, thank you for that. My second question, along the lines of Chair Smith's comments were about mail. It seems that the mail, we drop something in the mail. It's very inconsistent recently, in the last couple of years, as to when you actually will see that, you know, receive it or get, reaches destination. So my question is, is there any, have you heard anything from the postmaster or anyone that they're actually going to have a concerted effort to be more timely? Or shall we expect just the same-o-sama, which is anywhere from normal delivery, local, of a day or two, to up to a week to receive anything? Any indication from the U.S. Postal Service?
Well, the other thing we have to think about, the workforce with the pandemic has really changed in so many areas. And I know post office too. There's just hard time hiring staff sometimes and getting them all trained. So we're all doing our best, but I think that's part of it with the post office.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a man at the Portland Post Office that is the liaison between all of us clerks. So we can ask them any questions. Maybe we should send that one in an email and get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Curious with the delayed postmark, is it anticipated that we won't have true election results on Election Night? Because of that? Or will, if there's a certain amount of a spread, you will be able to declare who has prevailed or what measures have prevailed?
It all depends, especially on the gap between candidates on the same race or measures with yes or no's. It just totally depends on what the gap is. If it's a gap of 10, you could expect it to change. But if it's a gap of 3,000, maybe not. It just, this is our first big election with postmark. So we're all learning too.
So there isn't any hard, fast science of when we will know when someone, well, spread, I guess, given the postmarks? We're just going to have to see. After this election, we might have an idea.
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
When, you know, that makes a question. You bring up a question in my mind for Sheri. Will you announce when all of the ballots are counted?
Announce how? To you?
Just publicly on your website.
Well, yeah, our results will be there. We certify on June 23rd. After that date, nothing will change. But up to that date, things can change because of curing ballots, you know, signatures.
You do have a percentage, I've noticed in the past.
Excuse me?
You do have a percentage on your website. You say so many ballots have.
Right, we've had how many are left to count because it ended at 8:00 election night.
Precincts have reported, that type of thing.
Okay, how many precincts reported? We do vote by mail. So one drop box can get ballots from 100 precincts. You know, it's just random. We used to go to the polls, so we knew when the precinct's ballots were in. But with vote by mail, it's all over the place. It's always saying 100% of the precincts.
Right.
Because we don't separate them. We do know how precincts voted because that's how they're tallied. But to know how many are left from any precinct, we don't know that.
Okay. Great. Any other questions, Commissioners? Sheri, thank you for your update.
Okay, I have one more thing I would like to read just because we get correspondence from people. And this letter came last week, and it says, "Hoping you and your people will do the best to ensure an honest election result in order for the citizens to have confidence in our election, despite mail-in ballots, and to ensure continuation of our republic. And we do promise that we will do everything as perfectly as possible." So.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the report. We look forward to an update in a couple of weeks, whenever you want to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Sheri Hall. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, Chair. If you would please meet, announce.
I will now adjourn as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, Toni, could you please bring in on the Zoom meeting Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra?
That has been done. She is Commissioner.
Great, welcome, Commissioner Leenstra.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have a consent agenda for the Housing Authority. And before, I'm going to ask Toni to read it, but I'm also going to ask staff to come forward. There's a quick update that is different from the update you received on Tuesday this week. So staff would like to provide that for you before you vote. So if Denise and Devon, if you come forward, but if Toni, if you'd read the item, and then staff will give a quick update.
Yes, sir. Consent agenda item for Housing Authority, adoption of resolution 1964, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes agreement between Malala Apartments Limited Partnership, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and Clackamas County Housing Assistance Payment Contract and Related Matters for the Malala Apartments Project. Total value is $500,000. No county general funds are involved.
All right, so Denise Swanson is the Deputy Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services. Devon Ellen is the Housing Development Director at the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Would you please give the update?
Yes, good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. I'm going to turn it right over to Devon.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify something from last week. I think I inadvertently answered the question you asked, Commissioner Fisher, inaccurately. So I thought you were asking about the total value of the funds, the pilot funds that the county would receive over the course of 20 years, which would be $500,000. And I think you were asking what the taxes the county would not receive under this tax abatement pilot. So I don't have the exact number. It's hard to estimate and depends on a variety of different factors, but it's likely going to be upwards of $1 million over 20 years.
So total?
In total.
In total, okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Now accept a motion to pass this consent agenda item.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the Housing Authority.
I thought Commissioner Leenstra would make the motion.
I'm sorry.
Is what I thought.
Yeah. Commissioner. Yeah, Commissioner Leenstra, would you like to make, second the motion?
I would second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Leenstra. Commissioner Fisher has moved, and Commissioner Leenstra has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Toni, please call the poll.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. And Leenstra, thank you for joining us today. You can say and listen, or you can be excused. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the next consent agenda. Gary, what's next?
All right, thank you, Chair. Next is a public hearing. This hearing is a second reading of Ordinance Number 1-2022, Amending Chapter 7.07 Vehicle Registration Fee of the Clackamas County Code. Dan Johnson is a Director of Transportation and Development. He will give a quick update before the hearing starts. Go ahead, Dan. Thank you so much, Gary. Pleased to see you all today. Essentially, we are here for the second reading of this amendment to our vehicle registration fee to reduce fees for trailers. As Mike Besner so eloquently said at the last meeting, this is in response to the primary concern that we heard from our citizens regarding these various fees. We shared this with our Community Road Advisory Committee and made a recommendation to reduce it. They concurred and followed up with a recommendation to reduce the fees for trailers to $5 from the current amount, which is 30. And this was brought in front of the Board on March 31st of 2022 for that first reading. We are here for the second reading. I will also inform the Board, since that last hearing, we have had an additional five citizens email the Board in support of this reduction. And we also had two additional citizens in opposition of this particular proposal. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Stand before you to respond.
Any comments, Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I would be interested in why someone would be opposed.
The concerns upon their opposition were mostly around concerns about reducing revenue, sharing their feelings and the fact that trailers still have an impact on the roadways. That was a general nuance of those in opposition. But again, in totality, there were three comments that were received that were opposed. We had one, two, six that were in support.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. All right. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the in-person first. And I believe I have one blue card here. His name is Dave Farmer. Please come forward. State your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dave Farmer, 6355 Summerlin. I live in West Lynn. I think the fees should not be reduced. A light, single-axle trailer should pay less than a double or a triple. Our fee should be close to what other similar counties pay, like Washington, Marion, or Multnomah. If we pay a lot less than our neighbors, that shows the state we are not paying our share. And it seems odd to me that we would lower some fees and then start paying inefficient tolls on our already paid-for freeways. So that's all.
Thank you very much for coming here today. Toni, do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to testify on this matter?
Chair Smith, I do not have anyone registered. If anyone did not have a chance to register and would like to testify, please use the raise hand button, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair Smith, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Toni. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion from Commissioners on this item. Hearing none, Toni. Ma'am, I'll entertain a motion from my Commissioners.
Chair, I move we approve the ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.07, the vehicle registration fee.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has moved that we approve the ordinance amending Chapter Code 707 Vehicle Registration Fee. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, Chair. I want to just renew my concern that I've renewed over these years, and Dan's aware, Dan, Mr. Johnson, is aware of this. The formula in which was, this is derived on, has been one of my issues, not the issue, but one of my issues. And I, and basically it's regarding two things. Number one, the portion of amount that is dedicated to the cities, and compared to that dedicated to the county, which is, should be 60-40, I think that was by the plan, but essentially it's different because a share of that is dispersed for, and dedicated towards maintaining and bringing county roads within cities up to standards first, and then to be transferred to the city and taking it off the rolls, which that makes sense. And then the other one is, the community fund is solely on the backs of the unincorporated and not shared with the cities. So there's, there's a couple inequities there. But the third inequity, which caught me a little bit by surprise, was in learning about some of these road transfers or not, that we are doing, continuing to do maintenance on some county roads that are within cities, and the city is not willing to take the responsibility or the transfer, even though we bring it up to standards. Which means that the unincorporated is paying even a greater share than, than the cities once again. So I think those, when you total that together, that inequity is something that has been a concern of mine. So I will just conclude my comments there and say that. No, thanks. Nope, it's, it's just an issue, Dan can't change it. We're not gonna change it today, but I just wanted on record that that was, the one surprise was, is that this, this just compounds that inequity.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone on this. I really appreciate that our advisory group brought this to us because they thought that there was somewhat, and Dan, I'm looking to you to shake your head and make sure I got it right, some inequity in that the trailer fee was the same as the vehicle, and it didn't seem that the, that the use was the same, or there might be more trailers, or not everybody has a trailer and that they would be paying more of the cost. And if I recall correctly, I'm sure it's probably in our records here on our many pages of documents, but that the amount that we are losing was not, did not prevent us from accomplishing the goals that the advisory group had set forth and that we approved. So just wanted to make sure I had it all right, because Mr. Farmer coming today really made me think about some things, which I so appreciate about public hearings, but I just wanted to make sure that the basis of my support of this was, was still sound. So thank you so much.
And I'll just add one comment on that. I'm sure the advisory group came to this conclusion because they realized that the trailer use is minimal compared to vehicle use. And people who own trailers also own pickups and cars to pull those trailers, and they are continuing to pay that vehicle registration fee. So I think usage was tallied in this, and we're just trying to be equitable and fair to a majority of the citizens in Clackamas County who are paying these fees. Any other questions moving forward?
Yeah, Chair, just one more, then we, I appreciate the conversation, and I also appreciate Mr. Farmer coming here today and, and bringing about this issue about inequity. I would make the same argument that a household that has more than one car, let's say, let's say, a family of one, okay, has six, six vehicles. Here as I know, you can only drive one at a time, right? So the, the, there, there is inequity right there in and of itself that having, having multiple vehicles, that you're not gonna, you're not gonna wear those out very well either, right? You're not gonna put the same amount of load or wear and tear on the road. So there are a number of inequities in our transportation system as far as it's funded, and the tolling just, I think, is another issue that, at least that, at least that is related to, you know, traveling, you know, people being, that being used. But there again, it's, there's just too much wrong with tolling. Then there is anything, that's equitable about it, but I'll just leave it there for today.
Okay, good. Any further comments from Commissioners? Tony, would you please take, oh wait, yes, we had a motion, take the poll.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next, Chair, is the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Chair, point of order. You'll want to direct the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please?
It's not in my script, thank you. I will direct the clerk to read the ordinance in title only.
Just getting that pulled up.
Sure.
Ordinance Number 01-2022, and Ordinance Amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 7.07 Vehicle Registration Fee.
Thank you very much. Now, Gary, what's next?
Sorry, it was not in your script, it was not in any of our scripts. Thank you, Stephen, for catching it. That's why you're here, Stephen. That's why you have the counsel here to catch us on these things. Your job is done. No, it's not, all right. Next is the consent agenda. Tony and I are gonna split reading it today because it's quite long. So Tony, if you'll kick it off, please.
Yes, sir. First item on the consent agenda is for the Board of County Commissioners approving the April 14th, 2022 meeting minutes. Next, I have Health, Housing and Human Services. Item 1, Adoption of Resolution, Authorizing a Payment in Lieu of Taxes Agreement Between Malala Apartments Limited Partnership, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and Clackamas County Housing Assistance Payment Contract and Related Matters for the Malala Apartments project. Total value is $500,000, funded by Malala Apartments Limited Partnership. No county general funds are involved. Second item, Approval of Amendment 2 to the 2022 Revenue Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Operation and Financing of Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment, Recovery and Prevention Services, and Problem Gambling Programs. Amendment 2 adds $724,561.09 to the value of the agreement, increasing the maximum value to $9,107,562.79. Funding through the Oregon Housing Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item 3, Approval of Amendment Number 3 to the 2022 Revenue Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Operation and Financing of Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment, Recovery and Prevention Services, and Problem Gambling Programs. Amendment 3 rescinds $25,000 provided through the initial award. Agreement maximum value decreased to $9,825,62.79. Funding is through the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval to apply for funding in the amount of $500,000 for Community Restoration Services Aid and Assist Program. Funding through the Oregon Health Authority, request for application. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment 1 to an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Health Officer Services to Clackamas County Public Health Division. Total value of amendment is $76,533. Total contract value now not to exceed $109,601. Funding through budgeted county general funds. Approval of Grant Agreement with Providence Health and Services, Oregon, for the Help Me Grow Program. Contract not to exceed $80,000. Funding is through the Providence Health and Services, Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement 171482, Amendment 1 with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Division, for the Provision of Services to Clackamas County Residents. Funding is through Federal Older American Act Funds and Federal American Rescue Plan Funds. Total value is $7,276,070. Matching funds of $843,423, funded through budgeted county general funds. Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement with Washington County and South Metro Area Regional Transit with House Bill 2017, State Transportation Improvement Fund Discretionary Program Funds for the I-205 Borland Road Bridgeport Village Pilot Transit Service. The funding source is House Bill 2017 discretionary in the amount of $720,000. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Change Order Number 9 for various items such as facilities maintenance requirements and county preferences for exterior signage, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and cable clearance issues, additional banlin expenses directly related to an extended project schedule, as well as product shipping delays for the Sandy Health Center Project with Banlin Construction Limited Liability Corporation. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Grant, Revenue Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon Early Learning Division to provide Clackamas Early Learning Hub Coordination and Support. Grant has a maximum value of $1,753,262. No county general funds are involved. Approval to apply for U.S. Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Grant to improve criminal justice response to domestic violence, dating violence, stalking, and sexual assault in Clackamas County. Award would allow continuation of current program services provided by local organizations to improve criminal justice responses to domestic violence. Amount requested is $750,000, funded through U.S. Department of Labor. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Loan Forgiveness for the Red Lodge Transition Services Project, funded with Community Development Block Grant Dollars. No county general funds are involved. I will now turn it over to Administrator Schmidt.
Thank you. Transportation and Development, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Cambie to transfer permitting, authority, and maintenance responsibility for a portion of South Ivy Street Market Road Number 10, DTD Number 61012 to the city. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Contract with Eagle Elsinor Inc. for the Webster Road Paving Package. Total value is $904,000. Funding through Community Road Fund, County Road Fund, and HB 2017. No county general funds are involved. Assessment and taxation, Approval of a Resolution Improving the Submission of the Assessor's County Assessment Function. Funding Assistance Grant Application for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Total grant value is approximately $1,305,130,000. No county general funds are involved. Community Corrections, Approval of an Amendment Number 1 for a Time Extension to an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Portland State University. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Lane County for the Partial Reimbursement of the Evidence-Based Practices Coaches Academy Pilot EBP-CAP Training Project. Total value is $2,475. Funding is through the State of Oregon Department of Corrections Grant and Aid. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the Washington County for the Partial Reimbursement of the Evidence-Based Practices Coaches Academy Pilot EBP-CAP Training Project. Total value is $2,475. Funding is through the State of Oregon Department of Corrections Grant and Aid. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Subreception Agreement JR-23-003-03 between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Court-appointed Special Advocates for Foster Children for Community-Based Victim Services. Total grant value is $30,311.12, funded by the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Subreception Agreement JR-23-003-04 between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the Children's Center for Community-Based Victim Services. Total grant value is $23,227.20, funded by the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No county general funds are involved. That ends the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
You want us to read it again? I'm kidding.
I was tempted to ask that.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Savis has moved for approval of consent agenda. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please take the poll.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much. Up next is Public Communication. The portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is listed, is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraint. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take the in-person, person first. We have one blue card, that is Les Poole. Please state your name, your area of residence, and, sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Les Poole, I live here in the county. Been here, it's hard to believe, 30 years now. Wow, time flies. I appreciate the elections report, and things have gotten more complicated by some of the actions of the legislature, and not to get into all of it, I just think it's very good that we had a report today and there was some good dialogue. Elections have gotten more confusing than they need to be. And an election is an accountability for incumbents. You're running on your record when there's an election, and there's two of the three Commissioners in front of me are on the ballot. One of which is known for being very fiscally prudent and cautious, that's Commissioner Savis. And the other, of course, is Commissioner Fisher. And recently, I commented about her knowingly approving budgets that, for lack of a better description, were upside down. We've been through a lot in the last few years. And during that timeframe, as someone that's been involved and engaged, been here personally, I've seen a lot of decisions and spending and actions by Commissioner Fisher that troubled me, and I think she's rendered herself unelectable. I really do. The Board is a nonpartisan corporation. The county's a corporation, you're the Board of Directors. And what I've seen from Commissioner Fisher is extreme partisanship and bias on many occasions. I've witnessed what I consider to be blatant hypocrisy in the defense of former Chair Bernard's treatment of folks like me and others who've appeared. And yet, when the opportunity presented itself last in 2021, Commissioner Fisher relentlessly focused on someone that is a political opponent. And during that timeframe, January, February of 2021, I was troubled and others were troubled by the fact that she was rarely even here. We, as the folks that are relying on the Board to manage a billion-dollar budget and to make wise, careful decisions, need to know that the elected officials are going to be showing up here rather than at home on Zoom, unless necessary, of course. We need to know that we can trust their judgment. And unfortunately, we can't in the case of Commissioner Fisher. I've been very careful about my words here. I don't want this to be perceived as a political attack. It's a simple accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Les, very much for coming forward. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, so, Gary, I just want to confirm that this Board has never approved a budget that's been upside down, and we are by law required to have balanced budgets.
That is correct. You have always, you have always passed a balanced budget because it's required by law. You don't have a choice.
And we also have a AAA bond rating which goes towards our fiscal prudence.
That is correct.
And we have a lot of very healthy contingency and reserves in case there is budget challenges in the future.
That is correct.
Thank you, Gary, for clarifying.
Okay, I see no other people in the room. Tony will open up the Zoom portion. Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody?
Chair Smith, I have one registration for John Redding. John, please state your name and area of residence. You have three minutes. Apologies, John, I am having a problem unmuting you. Please stand by. John, I am unable to unmute you.
Are you able to hear me now?
I am now able to hear you, sir. Can you please state your name and area of residence?
Yeah, I'm John Redding and I live just north of Gladstone. And good morning to the commission. It's a simple situation. My motorhome has been abandoned near our home. This abandonment has been reported by several neighbors. The address the motorhome was previously garaged at is known as well and has also been reported. From me, the sheriff's office took the report and called back later to say that they did not know if or when the motorhome would be moved for lack of a place to take it and that I should probably call the co-enforcement office, which may yield better results. When I contacted co-enforcement, they said they didn't have the resources and I should call the county sheriff. A couple of months later, I again called the sheriff's office and was told there is still no place to take the machine, but the county commissioners may have the power to help. I was told that the commission should be well aware of this situation but have chosen to take no action. Apparently, RVs are not easy to recycle and are a particular problem because they are made of so many different types of materials. It was suggested by the sheriff's office that a county lot could be designated to take RVs to until they can be otherwise disposed of. In these times of rampant out-of-control homelessness, obviously, the main concern of a neighborhood is that the one RV could lead to others and the establishment of a homeless camp nearby, not to mention the insidiness of the crashed abandoned motorhome in the neighborhood. This particular motorhome happens to be parked right near a large open field where we can just picture tents and other things going in there. And I also have the names of other neighbors that have also reported the motorhome and share my concerns and who support my appearance here, so I appreciate your time.
Have you finished, Mr. Redding?
Yes, I have.
Thank you for calling up and bringing up this issue. I'd like to offer some points of clarification on the assumptions that you make. And number one, county commissioners are taking action on the removal of the RVs. In fact, it's a priority for us. We'll be listening to a policy session in two weeks where we will be allocating dollars to do this. We do care deeply about it. It sounds like you really got the runaround on this and I'm sorry for that. Commissioner Schmidt is going to offer up some information.
Yes, I'm Administrator Schmidt. Thank you, Chair. And John, I also apologize that county staff gave you the runaround. I don't ever want that to happen and I will help correct that from happening again. As the Chair just mentioned, the county commissioners have directed me and staff to come up with a plan on how we're going to coordinate and deal with and remove abandoned RVs throughout the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. Our staff is working on that right now. We'll have a plan back to the board here within the next two weeks. So we're in the plan, we're in the process, John. Again, I apologize that you got the runaround from staff.
Gary, we do have a place to put these RVs, correct?
There's a temporary place we store them and Stephen Madcor, can you help me answer that one, please?
First off, John, can you give us an address of your RV just to make sure it's on our list?
Yes, it's on southeast Merganzer, east of southeast Nable Avenue.
Oregon City? Oregon City?
No, this is unincorporated, just north of Gladstone. And I've talked to the police and they say they've had multiple reports of this, so they know where it is. They, we actually know where it came from, the house where it was previously parked, but the house appears to be empty. And so the police were not able to take any action with that house.
Okay, thank you for that. Are you done? Yeah, Commissioner Savas has a comment.
Actually, I thought maybe Mr. Madcor might be the best to help everyone understand the difficulty with motorhomes and why they are unique. So can you talk about that, Mr. Madcor, as far as not being able to find willing takers or towing companies are even willing to tow them? So it's unique to motorhomes and that is the challenge. So, Mr. Madcor, could you just expand on that a little bit?
Sure, Commissioner. We have approximately 35 to 40 abandoned RVs on our list right now. It's a matter of prioritizing which ones pose the greatest risk to traffic and public health issues. There's great costs associated and logistics associated with removing and disposing of these things. They are, as John pointed out, considered hazardous waste, asbestos, fuel, propane, drugs, excrement, things along those lines. Sometimes they're occupied, sometimes they're not. Thousand bucks to tow it, it's going to be $100 per foot. These things are 30 to 40 feet long. Sometimes, if they're registered, you do have to put them in storage for up to a month and you have to pay a storage facility. County slots are pretty tight right now, so there's a lot involved with this. We do have a coordinated county response that's being undertaken right now under the administrator's direction. We hope to have more thorough responses. It's a matter of money. It's a cost. It's a great cost to the county and, you know, we're not alone in this. A lot of other jurisdictions are experiencing the same issues. But it's, we'll make sure it's on the list, John, and we'll try to prioritize it, okay? So stay in touch with us.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I will say I think this board is willing to allocate the necessary resources to try to take care of as many of these as we can. And we get a, I don't want to speak for my board members, but I think that's a priority that we've heard from so many people that they want their taxpayer money spent on picking these abandoned RVs up. We have heard you and we are putting together a plan. As government does, we tend to be more complicated than people might think we should be. It takes at least three to four of our departments and agencies to legally do this. So we're working on it and we wish it was here now, but that's the way it is. Okay. Tony, any other comments from people?
Chair Smith, I do not have any other registered participants. If anyone would like to provide testimony, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. Chair Smith, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Tony. Now we'll now close the public communication portion of this meeting and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is county administrator update. That's me. I always like to share good news that's going on here at Clackamas County. I'll start with, as you know, April, early April was National Public Health Week and our health staff did a good work of helping get that word out. Our public health director, Philip Mason-Joyner, and health officer, Dr. Sarah Prezent, showcased the work of our county public health staff on social media, including some posts on the work we do for restaurant inspections and our partners with the Clackamas, our partner work Clackamas County Children's Commission and our Women, Infants, and Children's Program, or WIC. As also part of National Public Health Week, our staff called attention to the increased dangers and prevalence of opioids and fentanyl. We are working closely with our local prevention partners and community advocates and our schools to raise awareness of these dangerous drugs to young people with parents. And our public health advisory staff received widespread media coverage on that. Next, last week, our Children, Family, and Community Connections Division of Health, Housing, and Human Services hosted a Clean Slate Clackamas Event, which is an expungement clinic for residents. This clinic is aimed at individuals who have a low-level criminal record, even if it is just an arrest but no conviction, to help clear records so that they can pursue living wage jobs and more. Even a minor record can interfere with housing, employment, and educational opportunities. Twenty-one people participated in this clinic and are on their way to better prospects in their lives. This clinic was coordinated by our Children, Family, and Community Connections Division of Health, Housing, and Human Services, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, Community Corrections, and the Oregon Department of Human Services. So thank you to everyone who helped do that. Finally, a member of our staff in Transportation and Development, Renee Gonzalez, who works in the surveyor's office of the Transportation Department, got a very nice note from a resident and the resident wrote, "I would like to express my appreciation for the excellent customer service I have received from Renee. I had a few questions regarding surveys and your systems and had sent an inquiry to the generic surveyor email box. Renee responded immediately to my inquiry and my follow-up question. She was clear, concise, and the information she supplied was extremely helpful. It was great and surprising. Thank you, Renee." So I hope no one feels surprised by the great customer service our staff provides. In this case, thank you, Renee, for the great customer service. That is my update, Commissioners.
Wonderful, wonderful. We will now open this part of the meeting for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Savas, you're up first.
Sure. Well, it's budget season and yesterday we had our first preliminary look at the budget, so to speak. Not really the budget, but really the forecast and some other items. I do want to say that, you know, it's a pretty big document. There's a lot of, there's a lot of material there. And, you know, I know, I want to thank our new and our existing Budget Committee citizen members for participating in that and it's a lot of work and they dedicate over a week of time, not only in just in the preparation, but also in attending the meetings for a week, at least a week long here at the county. We have had a couple of years, or three, I would argue at least three, years where we did not have a sustainable, structurally sound budget. Some might, you know, by law, sure, we have to balance the budget and you can have a budget that is balanced but is going backwards. I don't use the word upside down, but it's structurally not sound or sustainable. We've rectified that, I think, under Gary's leadership, the administrator's leadership, and our finance staff leadership, we have turned that around. But I am concerned, ongoing, how we meet that. We saw really, again, a forecast and I have, you know, just worries. I don't have concerns about our staff. I just have worries about how, do we have the fortitude and the intellect and the commitment across the board, staff, commissioners, everyone involved here, to make the necessary cuts to make sure our budget is sustainable so we can keep our community sound and safe and secure? And if we can't do that, then we compromise that, our ability to do all those things that we're supposed to be doing. So I am concerned, knowing that the cost, the cost that we're facing, not unique to Clackamas County, but across this country, coast to coast, we're seeing extreme inflation in materials, services, labor is going up, we're seeing inflation rates, there's cost of living adjustments, so forth, that are just accelerating the cost of fuel. We go through a lot of fuel, our sheriff's office, our transportation department. So we're seeing a lot of hits here and I just hope that we, again, we have the wherewithal and the fortitude to do what it takes to really go through this budget. That means extra days at work here on the budget, whatever it takes, but I'm concerned going forward. Those are my comments for today, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. Yeah, Commissioner Savas, I have to agree, budget's so important and it was refreshing to have our new Budget Committee meet yesterday and dig, dive into our forecast and vacancy rates and all of those aspects that we have to pay so much attention to. So ditto to that. I do want to comment today on something that I've been concerned about, which is some news coming out of Portland with, that I think Clackamas County and our board needs to be aware of, which I know we are somewhat aware because Chair Smith and I had a little bit of conversation about this just a couple of days ago. We have worked really hard and I, in particular, as our liaison with the homeless services measure, to make sure that Clackamas County was well-positioned to get the resources proportionally to our population for the homeless services measure. And we also worked very hard and it was not easy during, when we were at the table planning this homeless services measure, to make sure that each of the counties were able to define their own local implementation plan and be in charge of the programming. We've had to ward off kind of power grabs from Metro over the last bit of time wanting to divert resources and that's been a challenge because what we have created with our local implementation plan in Clackamas County has worked and is working. So why I bring this up today is that there is an effort out of Portland with a privately-funded, they call it a dark money group, that is looking to divert 75% of the homeless services dollars to shelter in Portland. And that would not be good for Clackamas County. First of all, our residents are paying for that tax. Second of all, the homeless services measure in and of itself allows for shelter. As we've talked in our policy sessions in Clackamas County, we know what works and thanks to Commissioner Savas, Commissioner Schrader, before I came on the commission, the effort to develop and program the Veterans Village, which has had such great success when it comes to shelter, of providing those much-needed services to transition people out of homelessness, has been very successful. And we know for our Clackamas County, we want to expand shelter opportunities, but we also can't deny what has really worked when we had people sheltered during COVID in our hotel motel program. The, what's called navigation case management peer support, I don't care what you want to call it, but it's meeting people where they are and directing services around them so that they can be stably housed. That works. It has worked in Clackamas County and it will continue to work, provided we don't have people outside of Clackamas County, namely, people from Portland, being successful in their effort to get this on the ballot. So far, it is not successful. They've hit many roadblocks, they're going to try to take it to the courts. I don't think they can be successful. As a lawyer, I would say you can't change administration of a ballot measure through another ballot measure. That just won't work. So let's keep our eye on this, Commissioners. Let's make sure that what happens in Clackamas County, our decisions that we need to make in Clackamas County for the people that we have in Clackamas County, remain here in Clackamas County. And that's what's on my mind today, Chair Smith. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, thank you for that. I should have given you this paper. But you'll appreciate it and you can get a copy. You know, there was a story that ran in the Oregonian that really underreported the efforts from Clackamas County on a supportive housing services efforts. The staff went through and compiled some information for us and you're going to love this and you already know what it is. By the end of April, we will award $6.175 million to community-based organizations and nonprofits to implement the local implementation plan, as you mentioned. For the first three quarters of the program, we have spent $2.1 million. Sixty-nine households are now placed in permanent housing. Seventy-one households received long-term rent assistance and vouchers and are searching for housing. One hundred and fifty-two households are assigned with ongoing supportive housing case managers and on their way to their housing needs. Eighty-five emergency and transitional shelter units were provided, which was 20 more than expected for the entire first year. And this is with, most of the tax money had not come in yet. There has been a delay in collections of tax revenue. That's the nature of the beast. We can't help that. But thank you, staff, for bringing that and Commissioner Fisher for bringing it up. I have two other items. I went to the fair board meeting last night and, of course, those people are just a really fun, dedicated group and they do good work. And Brian Crowe, the new administrative director, was there to give us an update on what he's doing. First of all, he has been able to identify some ARPA funds for lost revenue for their particular entity. It's just not fairs, but I believe it's agricultural-related entities as well. And he's going to apply for a grant for lost revenue. Excuse me, the total amount of the grant's $35 million. They will release the guidelines on April 25th and he is on that and can't wait to get us some money. He's also, has 25 food vendors who are signed up for the fair and he's looking for sponsorships overall. You know, he's a marketing guy and so one of the first things that he did is looked at how to market the fair. He wants to design a new logo. He has hired a graphic designer because he says the logo's too small and it's not that visible and it's kind of busy. So they're working on that. He has also developed an app for the website to populate events so people can download the app on their phone. Bam, we're right there. So I think it's really- So I think it's really exciting. Yes, they talked about the Fair Barn, the livestock barn moving forward. We're still developing the RFP requirements, architecture and engineering components to go with that, test samples, geographic geological inputs, and working with the city of Camby to move forward on that. I also want to read a statement for the record. Last week, we received a presentation from John Hartsock regarding the C-800 Public Safety Radio System Replacement Project. Like many projects these days, they are over budget. He asked that this commission bail them out of a $2.5 million over-budget spending. I've had enough, and I want to make it clear, that the county is not in the business of bailing out every entity that overspins their budget or poorly plans their development projects. I truly value the dedication of our fire, EMS, police, and sheriff partners. Public safety is the number-one priority for Clackamas County residents and a core government service. Likewise, the C-800 voter-approved levy project is critically important to ensuring these partners are able to provide services. I don't know how the C-800 group got here in an over-budget situation. If there was mismanagement or lack of oversight or other factors that I am not aware of, what I do know is that Clackamas County cannot save every project, no matter how critical it is. I am adamant we hold people accountable for project management and spending. I will say it again, the county is not here to bail you out, as is supported by an intergovernmental agreement between the agencies when they offered this up for voter approval. Thank you very much. That is the end of this meeting. We are in a journey.